Mr. Weezer. Welcome to the City Council Chambers this morning. Good morning to you. Call in all council members to report to the John Ferraro chambers. Mr. Wesson, thank you. Fridays are special days because Mr. Wesson is here and a special presentation later on. Good morning. It's Friday, September 29th, 2006, the 225th year of the founding of the great city of Los Angeles. We have a lot of distinguished people of Los Angeles. Give yourselves a big hand right now on this Friday morning. We welcome you and we thank you all. We're in the John Ferraro chambers named after the late, great president of the City Council, John Ferraro, who served this city for 35 years with great experience and great commitment to the people of Los Angeles. Madam Clerk, we are waiting one member of council to get a quorum. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. President.
Great, thank you. So we will stand by. Please welcome Assistant Pro Tem for the great City Council of Los Angeles, the great Jan Perry of the ninth district.
Thank you very much.
I believe Ms. Han is in the rotunda. If someone can go and locate her and have her come in, I would appreciate it. And we can commence with the presentations this morning, and our first presentation will be by Council President Eric Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and welcome, ladies and gentlemen, and wanted to thank everybody who is here behind us as we commemorate our Domestic Violence Awareness Month here in the city of Los Angeles. We were joined by Colleen Williams, who is our emcee in the rotunda for a great program with City Attorney Rocky Delgado. Councilmember Jack Weiss, our Chair of Public Safety Committee, is on jury duty, otherwise would be with us, but as the council liaison to the Domestic Violence Task Force, it falls on my shoulders each year to make sure that here in council chambers, we not only are able to publicize the activities of the Domestic Violence Task Force, but also to speak about some of the campaigns that we have in the coming year. And this year's theme is the DART teams, the Domestic Abuse Response Teams, which are a part of our philosophy here in Los Angeles of taking members from the domestic violence community who are able to roll out with police officers whenever there are domestic violence calls, and to help women, families, children, sometimes men even, get out of those situations of domestic violence so that police don't come time and time and time again to those same households with often a worsening situation. So I wanted to hand it over to Colleen Williams to say a few words, and then we will hear and honor some of the police officers who are literally at the front line of rushing towards these survivors and helping them out to make our city a safer place. So please welcome, you all know her very well, one of the great voices, faces of Los Angeles, Colleen Williams of NBC4.
Thank you very much. As you all know, we're here to honor the advocates who take care of the victims, the members of DART. We're also here to salute the brave men and women who you see behind us, who risk their lives every single day on the most dangerous type of police call. They're the people who roll up, they're the first people on the scenes. I've done enough ride-alongs, I've covered enough stories about domestic violence to know it is a dangerous situation. People need to know domestic violence is not a family issue, it's not something people should hide in the closet and whisper about. Domestic violence is a crime. You'll see the banners around Los Angeles for the month of October that say, "Listen up. There is no excuse for domestic violence in the city of Los Angeles or anywhere. We need to make sure this doesn't just happen for the month of October." This is a campaign to make sure that domestic violence is eventually eradicated.
Thank you. And while many of us are going to sleep, Colleen Williams is still at work, so we appreciate her making the time this morning to join us as well. Your addition this year really helped publicize all that we are doing here. Just a couple statistics before I turn it over to Carol Tantra, who's going to say a few things on behalf of the Domestic Violence Task Force. We've talked a lot about homelessness recently in these chambers. About 50% of the women who are homeless in Los Angeles are there because they're battered, they're survivors of domestic violence. When we look at the issues of hiring more police officers in the city, if we could just reduce the domestic violence return calls that we have for our police officers, it'd be the equivalent of putting hundreds, if not thousands, of police officers back on the streets for other crime fighting. When we look at the leading cause of death for women of a certain age group, it is domestic violence, it continues to be throughout the city, and every 15 seconds in the United States of America, there is a woman who experiences domestic violence. So while we have come a long way in the last 10 or 15 years of allowing people to recognize that this is indeed a disease and a crime, we have a long way to go. So I hope that we will all redouble our efforts, not just in this month, but throughout the year, to make sure that we eradicate domestic violence once and for all. With that, I'd like to invite Carol Tantra to come forward. She represents a number of men and women, a lot of people who are out there on the front line of each one of our council districts throughout the city and with the police divisions. And one last note on DART, she's been a true partner on making sure these DART teams, I want to thank this council, because if you recall, funding from the state cut DART teams in four different police divisions. I introduced the legislation that was supported by this council and signed by the mayor, and really backed, more importantly, by the domestic violence community, to make sure that those four teams are back in place, two more expanded, but we set as a goal this year, I hope colleagues legislatively, City Attorney, I'm not making any news about legislative initiatives out of order, but that we will have a Domestic Abuse Response Team in every single police division in the city of Los Angeles. So please welcome Carol Tantra, Chair of our Domestic Violence Task Force.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti. Before you start, Madam, Mr. Rosendahl would like to say a few words, if you would, Mr. Rosendahl.
I just wanted to acknowledge Carol Tantra, who's speaking, just about to speak, who is from Venice and has provided incredible leadership on domestic violence issues in our district. She holds the hand of the woman that has suffered through it, takes her through the process, gets the right support, and that's the kind of community activism that we all appreciate. I just want to acknowledge you before you speak. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl.
I first came to City Council in 1998, and thanks to term limits, none of you were in office at that point. In fact, council chambers was in City Hall East at the time, but I was representing Ruth Galanter on the Domestic Violence Task Force at that time, and it was Ruth's suggestion that we honor an LAPD officer from Pacific Division at that time to recognize the Domestic Violence Awareness Month. The city task force picked it up as a citywide event the following year, and we've been doing it every year since. And all of these officers here deserve the recognition that they're getting. They are truly protecting and serving victims of domestic violence in the city of Los Angeles. And as an afterthought, the same officer that was nominated in 1998 is again being recognized this year, and I think that shows the commitment of LAPD to a consistent and thorough backing of domestic violence services in this city. I thank you very much.
And we have a little video clip that we'd like to queue up as well. Do we have that ready? And we will, okay, channel 35. Let me read the names of who we're going to honor behind council chambers, just briefly, so we can give them a collective round of applause as well.
911 emergency, operator 709.
They would tell me, "I'm going to cut you up, put you in a bag, and put you in the front of the house so your sons can see you."
What we did was the blueprint for what is now considered commonplace throughout this country. Our office was the light, really, that made a difference.
At the time that we all started doing this, there was no law enforcement agency in the United States that had a full-time domestic violence investigative unit.
We respond right behind the black and white, so that when we hear a domestic violence call or domestic violence-related call come out, we're right there, getting that real information to them straight up front before he has a chance to sort of start working on her, makes all the difference in the world.
Let's get a restraining order. Let us tell you how to use the restraining order for your benefit.
I think it says to families that we are here to help protect you in those situations, and you should be cognizant that we're ready to protect at the earliest stage in the cycle of domestic violence.
I know that one person will be safe and not be afraid to wake up every morning.
While those credits are rolling, we will be running that throughout the week on channel 35 and throughout the whole month, so we want to thank everybody again. We'll go behind our council chambers and honor each one of these police officers individually. Let's give a round of applause to our Domestic Violence Task Force and to all these police officers for their great work. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti. Our next presentation will be Council District 7.
I think I got everybody mostly right.
Good morning, colleagues. We're asking members of the President's Joint Commission on LAUSD Governance to join us, as we recognize them for their hard work over the course of this last year and more in regards to trying to improve our public schools here in Los Angeles. Colleagues, as you recall, it was June of 2005, just over a year ago, when this council voted to establish the President's Joint Commission on LAUSD Governance, a commission that brought together not only City of Los Angeles officials, but officials from the various municipalities served by LAUSD and the school board itself, to create a 30-member board representative of all stakeholders in public education in Los Angeles, similar to our charter reform process, seeking ways to modernize how schools are run in LAUSD, all with the purpose and goal of improving student performance, accountability, parental involvement, school safety, and a whole host of other subject matters. And behind us, we have most of the 30 commissioners that volunteered their time, literally, hours at a time, week after week, meeting every other week for the better part of a year, listening to nationally renowned experts, officials from the city, from the school district, and others, and then to be followed by deliberations which led to the recently released report from the commission listing 54 specific recommendations to improve public schools in Los Angeles. It came at a very interesting time. As many of you recall, when we were launching this commission process, there was a mayoral race going on where public education in Los Angeles became the number one issue in a marriage race, and many questioned the role and the relevance of public education in a municipal political campaign, a municipal civic dialogue. Well, over the course of this last year, we saw that public education remains at the forefront. Mayor Villarreal was successful in sponsoring AB 1381, which was approved by the legislature and signed by the governor, and so we have seen already significant changes that we can expect in the near future as far as the governance of LAUSD, but the question still remains, while we change the organizational chart at the top in LAUSD, what specifically will be different about the district? What specifically will change at a school level or for a student's experience to ensure improvement? And that's where we hope the commission report comes in, providing not just 54 recommendations, but a broad range of categories. These folks became experts in school finance, in school safety, in curriculum and instruction, personnel and collective bargaining issues, the use of technology in education, joint news programs, and so many other arenas. I think they each earned a PhD in school management, but we wanted to, first of all, let them know that their recommendations won't fall on deaf ears, that we, as the city council, will take their recommendations forward with full consideration and do what we can, do our part, to implement them and improve public schools, and encourage the school board to do the same for the recommendations that are relevant to the school district and the legislature to do the same for the recommendations that are relevant to state government. So we wanted to bring them in for a very appropriate thank you and acknowledgement this morning, and before we proceed to that part, I want to ask my colleague, Councilmember Jose Weezer, who was school board president at the time that we launched this commission, to say a few words.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Padilla, and first I want to thank Councilmember Padilla, who, when I was president of the school board and he
She represents a number of men and women, a lot of people who are out there on the front line of each one of our council districts throughout the city and with the police divisions. And one last note on DART, she's been a true partner on making sure these DART teams, I want to thank this council because if you recall, funding from the state cut DART teams in four different police divisions. I introduced the legislation that was supported by this council and signed by the mayor and really backed, more importantly, by the domestic violence community to make sure that those four teams are back in place, two more expanded. But we set as a goal this year, I hope colleagues legislatively, city attorney, I'm not, you know, making any news about legislative initiatives out of order, but that we will have a domestic abuse response team in every single police division in the city of Los Angeles. So please welcome Carol Tantow, Chair of our Domestic Violence Task Force.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti. Before you start, madam, Mr. Rosendahl would like to say a few words, if you would, Mr. Rosendahl.
I just wanted to acknowledge Carol Tantow, who's speaking, just about to speak, who is from Venice and has provided incredible leadership on domestic violence issues in our district. She holds the hand of the woman that has suffered through it, takes her through the process, gets the right support, and that's the kind of community activism that we all appreciate. I just want to acknowledge you before you speak. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl.
I first came to city council in 1998, and thanks to term limits, none of you were in office at that point. In fact, Council Chambers was in City Hall East at the time, but I was representing Ruth Galanter on the Domestic Violence Task Force at that time, and it was Ruth's suggestion that we honor an LAPD officer from Pacific Division at that time to recognize the Domestic Violence Awareness Month. The city task force picked it up as a citywide event the following year, and we've been doing it every year since. And all of these officers here deserve the recognition that they're getting. They are truly protecting and serving victims of domestic violence in the city of Los Angeles. And as an afterthought, the same officer that was nominated in 1998 is again being recognized this year, and I think that shows the commitment of LAPD to a consistent and thorough backing of domestic violence services in this city. I thank you very much.
And we have a little video clip that we'd like to queue up as well. Do we have that ready? And we will... Okay. Channel 35. Let me read the names of who we're going to honor behind Council Chambers just briefly so we can give them a collective round of applause as well.
911 emergency, operator 709.
And he would tell me, "I'm going to cut you up, put you in a bag, and put you in the front of the house so your sons can see you."
What we did was the blueprint for what is now considered commonplace throughout this country. Our office was the light, really, that made a difference.
At the time that we all started doing this, there was no law enforcement agency in the United States that had a full-time domestic violence investigative unit.
We respond right behind the black and white so that when we hear a domestic violence call or domestic violence-related call come out, we're right there, getting that real information to them straight up front before he has a chance to sort of start working on her makes all the difference in the world.
Let's get a restraining order. Let us tell you how to use the restraining order for your benefit.
I think it says to families that we are here to help protect you in those situations, and you should be cognizant that we're ready to protect at the earliest stage in the cycle of domestic violence.
I know that one person will be safe and not be afraid to wake up every morning.
While those credits are rolling, we will be running that throughout the week on Channel 35 and throughout the whole month. So we want to thank everybody again. We'll go behind our Council Chambers and honor each one of these police officers individually. Let's give a round of applause to our Domestic Violence Task Force and to all these police officers for their great work. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti. Our next presentation will be Council District 7.
Glad to have my title, in case you're a flight risk. Good morning, colleagues. We're asking members of the President's Joint Commission on LAUSD Governance to join us as we recognize them for their hard work over the course of this last year and more in regards to trying to improve our public schools here in Los Angeles. Colleagues, as you recall, it was June of 2005, just over a year ago, when this council voted to establish the President's Joint Commission on LAUSD Governance, a commission that brought together not only City of Los Angeles officials, but officials from the various municipalities served by LAUSD and the school board itself to create a 30-member board representative of all stakeholders in public education in Los Angeles, similar to our charter reform process, seeking ways to modernize how schools are run in LAUSD, all with the purpose and goal of improving student performance, accountability, parental involvement, school safety, and a whole host of other subject matters. And behind us, we have most of the 30 commissioners that volunteered their time, literally, hours at a time, week after week, meeting every other week for the better part of a year, listening to nationally renowned experts, officials from the city, from the school district, and others, and then to be followed by deliberations which led to the recently released report from the commission listing 54 specific recommendations to improve public schools in Los Angeles. It came at a very interesting time. As many of you recall, when we were launching this commission process, there was a mayoral race going on where public education in Los Angeles became the number-one issue in a marriage race, and many questioned the role and the relevance of public education in a municipal political campaign, a municipal civic dialogue. Well, over the course of this last year, we saw that public education remains at the forefront. Mayor Villarreal was successful in sponsoring AB 1381, which was approved by the legislature and signed by the governor, and so we have seen already significant changes that we can expect in the near future as far as the governance of LAUSD. But the question still remains, while we change the organizational chart at the top in LAUSD, what specifically will be different about the district? What specifically will change at a school level or for a student's experience to ensure improvement? And that's where we hope the commission report comes in, providing not just 54 recommendations, but a broad range of categories. These folks became experts in school finance, in school safety, in curriculum and instruction, personnel and collective bargaining issues, the use of technology in education, joint news programs, and so many other arenas. I think they each earned a PhD in school management. But we wanted to, first of all, let them know that their recommendations won't fall on deaf ears, that we, as the city council, will take their recommendations forward with full consideration and do what we can, do our part, to implement them and improve public schools, and encourage the school board to do the same for the recommendations that are relevant to the school district, and the legislature to do the same for the recommendations that are relevant to state government. So we wanted to bring them in for a very appropriate thank you and acknowledgement this morning. And before we proceed to that part, I want to ask my colleague, Councilmember Jose Weeza, who was school board president at the time that we launched this commission, to say a few words.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. And first, I want to thank Councilmember Padilla, who, when I was president of the school board and he was council president here, he approached me with the idea of the creation of this type of governance, of this kind of type of commission to examine the governance of LAUSD. And he approached me after him saying that he had spoken to a number of school board members and a number of other people sensing the frustration on the need to bring the LAUSD governance structure up to speed to the 21st century, because after all, there had never been a comprehensive review of the governance structure of LAUSD in the history of LAUSD. So I want to thank Councilmember Padilla for having the vision, the wisdom, and the courage to help us move this forward. Thank you so much, Mr. Padilla. You know, and the landscape has changed just a bit since then. When we started this, AB 1381, maybe it was in some people's minds, but it certainly wasn't in the public's mind, in this commission's mind, and I think this commission did a wonderful job in striving through going forward, coming up with some solutions, whether AB 1381 is in place or not, that they felt could truly change and improve the governance structure to get the ultimate goal of finding ways to raise student achievement and allow children to realize their dreams. Here we are in City Hall chambers talking about education, and I'm not sure if it's just myself or if it's... We've always talked so much about education in these chambers, but it seems like it's becoming more and more of an issue. And I'm glad it is, because in my view, I think education is perhaps, or improving public education is perhaps the number-one issue that this country faces, given that a majority of our future workforce is being educated in large urban centers such as Los Angeles. But we all know that's not only an economic question, it's also a moral one. If you look at demographics, improving education for LAUSD and large urban centers throughout the country is a moral issue as well, because for many of these children, a good education is their only ticket out of poverty. And so what this commission did, in them spending hours and hours and hours of reviewing those documents, of listening to experts, of debating the issues, they have contributed to ensuring that Los Angeles and this country has a better workforce and to ensuring that children who are attending LAUSD will have an opportunity to succeed. Councilmember Padilla and myself made a commitment when we started this commission. We said that we will ensure you that we will go forward and attempt to implement the recommendations of this commission. We have already done that. As you all know, in March, the voters will have the ability to decide whether they want to go forward with three of the recommendations that this commission made and change the charter in the city of Los Angeles. On the March ballot, there will be a proposal as to whether school board members should have term limits, three, four-year terms, whether school board members should abide by additional ethic rules and contribution limits, and there will also be a commission set up to examine, or committee set up to examine, the compensation for school board members. There are a host of other recommendations in this report. I hope that we could partner with a school district who perhaps has a majority of the authority to implement these recommendations, and that we, as a city council, do not lose sight of the importance of supporting education in LAUSD. And I want to, again, thank these commissioners for the time they put in, and I wanted, at this time, to recognize one particular commissioner, my appointment to the commission, someone who has over 20 years' experience in working in the educational field and truly understands what it takes to improve education. She is the founder of the Brauhaite Learning Collaborative, which is a community effort that is involving parents and families and communities more in education, the Brauhaite region, and she has had a number of posts in LAUSD, and I think her wisdom, her knowledge, her experience really helped this commission move along. So at this time, I want to recognize Maria Casillas, a co-chair of the Commission on School Governors. Thank you so much for your efforts and your contributions, Maria.
And for the record, colleagues, every commissioner will be receiving a certificate signed by all of us and the mayor in appreciation of their work. We won't take the time to do that here. We'll do that in the media room behind chambers, but I also want to take a second to acknowledge my appointee, the other co-chair of the commission, David Cunningham. If for nothing else, for having taken so much out of his personal time and his professional time, a lot of billable hours those could have been, to be part of the lead of this very important commission and this process that we just know will have a long-term impact on the quality of public schools. But to conclude our presentation, Councilmember Weeza and I, in full Academy Award style, just want to read off the list of names of all the commissioners, and we'll end with a round of applause, and we'll escort them to the media room for the presentation of the certificates there. We want to thank Dr. Robert Barner for his service.
Mr. Ed Burke.
Ms. Maria Casillas.
Dr. Yvonne Chan.
Mr. Bill Clay.
Mr. George Cole.
Mr. Jose Cornejo.
Mr. David Cunningham.
Ms. Maria Davila.
Mr. Donald Deere.
Mr. Drew Ferretti.
Mr. Marquise Harris Dawson.
Mr. Jerry Horowitz.
Ms. Cecilia Moreno.
Mr. Ramon Muniz.
Ms. Mary Rose Ortega.
Ms. Erin Peck.
Mr. Scott Plotkin.
Mr. Ron Prescott.
Mr. Matthew Rodman.
Ms. Mary Rodriguez.
Ms. Julie Relas.
Ms. Carla Sanger.
Ms. Colleen Schwab.
Ms. Camilla Townsend.
Mr. Howard Walinsky.
Mr. Andrew Westall.
Dr. Tyree Wyder.
Mr. Jonathan Williams. And the winner is? The kids of LAUSD.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes would like to say a few words.
If I could, before we go, I want to also thank the council and the school board for making these wonderful appointments, what I thought was a significant pool of talent. And at this time, I also want to recognize with us today is School Board President Marlene Cantor, who's here, as well as School Board Member Monica Garcia. Thank you for being here with us today.
Mr. Reyes, please.
I just wanted to take a second and thank my colleagues for raising this issue to another level, to the commissioners for bringing to light those concerns that many of us are focused on, but more importantly, to allow us to understand the pieces as they move forward, what's important from your perspective. We do have this big debate going on. I think the goals are admirable, the energy of the mayor is tremendous, but it really comes down to the details and how we effectuate the environment for our kids as they sit behind that desk and they listen to the teacher, how much are they going to learn and how will they pass those tests? Everything we do is about that moment in time when they can feel confident about the high grades they can achieve for a career and to be contributing members of our society. So as we begin to change our conditions today, and it's sad to say that the dropout rate today is no better than it was 40 years ago. And so something is not working, something has to change. I'm hoping the steps collectively that we're taking will make a change in the next 40 years. We can say, "This is where it began," because of our dropout rates have decreased and our graduation rates have increased, our tax dollars are spent building schools instead of prisons. So thank you very much for your hard work.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Labanche is our next speaker, followed by Ms. Gruehl and then Mr. Rosendahl.
I want to thank Mr. Padilla and Mr. Weeza, and thank Marlene Cantor as elected officials for all the work that you do. Thank many of you who I know personally from this very important commission and echoing the words that Mr. Reyes said. And now it's, we've got to keep it pushed, we've got to keep a push on it, because it's all... I'm proud of Los Angeles, I'm proud I went to LA Unified, I'm proud I went to John Marshall, I'm proud that Alex Padilla went to San Fernando, I know you went to Cilejion, Jose, but that's okay. My brothers, my brothers went to Loyola. I didn't have the grades to get to Loyola, I probably wouldn't have the grades to get to Cilejion. Whatever the case may be, the important is, it's about trying to make it better for us, because all of us who are standing right here had a good experience as a young person going through schools and enjoying, you know, the effort that was put forth, and we've got to correct it, because life is absolutely too short, and that window of enjoyment of being a young person going through schools, whether it's grade schools, middle schools, or high schools, must be redeemed and captured and improved so they can be successful and contributing members of our community. I thank all you very, very much.
Ms. Gruehl.
Thank you very much, and I want to thank both Jose and Alex, Marlene and Monica, and particularly all of the commission members, because your time and energy that you spent was something that was critically important as we look at the future of education. There's a lot to do, and I think if anyone thinks it's going to be one or two people or who, all it's going to be, it's actually all of us that are going to make a difference. And I always, sorry, bring up my son, but as a new parent and have preschool now, and the kind of parental involvement that is required and important and necessary, and at my schools, we have to have the parents, the community, the elected officials, and also those who work in the school district, the teachers and the principals, as problem solvers in how we deal with the issue of education, because we've talked about it is the future of our city are those young people, and we do have to invest in them. So my only thing is to challenge all of you who served on this commission and spent the last, is it year and a half?
Almost, yes.
Almost a year and a half, that your job is not done, although we're celebrating today. Your knowledge base through going to all of those hearings and having the interaction with the school district is something we want to utilize in the future, and so we hope that you will continue to keep coming back to us and reminding us and saying, "How can we work with the school district? How can we help the school district?" Because we are a city in and of itself that has to focus on children, and so I think this was a great idea when it was created. In fact, I remember saying, "Why didn't I think of that?" when Alex and Jose thought about it. So congratulations to both of you, and a special thank you to all of you that served on the commission. Thank you very much.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Yeah, I obviously echo my colleagues, but first, to my two colleagues there, thank you for the leadership you've put on it. And as I saw Marlene Cantor coming from her chair, I wanted to acknowledge her, because here's the beauty of it all, folks, we do so many commissions and so many reports, and so many of them unfortunately get dust and go nowhere. But the activity and the actions of all of you over the last year and a half is the beginning, the baseline, and the backdrop for real education reform that's happening in the school system. And I am so thrilled that the timing is everything. What you've done is now going to be the underpinnings of what the mayor does and what the school board does together. And to Marlene, I just want to acknowledge the fact that it was beautiful to read in the LA Times this morning that there might be legal challenges about where we're going, and I'm 100% with the mayor, because we have to move forward in bold ways. But the fact that you're cooperating, the school board and the city, right now on the most important aspect, which are the kids and the future of the kids. So hats off to the commission, you've done work that will be used in the years ahead in making the LA Unified School District a better district. Thank you all. God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl.
Before we conclude, this is a joint commission, after all, I wanted to afford Marlene Cantor, President of the School Board, to say a few words.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm very happy to be here, and thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. And I wanted to also, again, thank my colleagues and friends, Alex Padilla and Jose Weeza, for their leadership, and my colleague Monica Garcia over here. I wanted to recommit, renew, and renew the promise to the city and especially to the commissioners and to the children of Los Angeles that the school board will be looking very carefully at what they presented. It was not a year in vain. I know that so many things happened during that year, and oftentimes, the commission's work sort of went a little bit under the radar screen, but not for me as the president and not for the school board. We did have the commission, David Cunningham came and presented with some of the commissioners to the school board what their findings were. We committed to implementing them. Right now, we're very focused on the task in front of us, which is finding a new superintendent, and I have just renewed my commitment to the commission that we will be bringing this with us as we transition to a new superintendent, all of their recommendations. And also, I wanted to say, and make sure that you heard this, that there are two paths that we are going down right now. One is to clarify with the courts the constitutionality of AB 1381, but that in no way hinders for me my responsibilities and my commitment to work as a partnership, and I was thrilled to see that in the LA Times today in the way that it was characterized. So thank you very much. Thank you to the commissioners, thank you to my colleagues, and we will move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Buenos dias. I just wanted to say thank you to all of you and our commissioners for the work that has been done and for the work that we'll continue to do. We have to get to 100% graduation in LA, there's nothing else to say, but we will need all of you to continue to support us and advocate for a more responsive and successful district. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Our next presentation will be from Council District 10. Mr. Wesson, I believe you have a special visitor today.
Thank you, Madam President, members. I'm joined today by one of our general managers, Ed. And ladies and gentlemen, this is my favorite day of the week. It is pet adoption Friday, and I have before you the beautiful Candy. Candy is a year and a half, this is as big as she's going to get. She's looking for a home, she's looking for a family that's looking for a companion animal. You want unconditional love, trust me, you'll get it from Candy, plus she'll give you a good workout, too, keep that weight from around the midsection. She is a terrier mix. Again, her name is Candy, a year and a half, she has all of her shots, she has been microchipped, and she is ready to go. Now, she's also famous. This week, she was just highlighted on The Price is Right, so you have an opportunity to adopt a celebrity dog. Now, I want to take a moment, if I may, and ask Ed to make an announcement about a very important upcoming event this Thursday.
Actually, this Saturday, for the public, we're opening up our North Central Animal Care Center for the first time. This is a brand-new, state-of-the-art, award-winning animal welfare, animal care center, something that I'm sure all Angelenos will be very, very proud of. On Thursday, there will be a VIP reception for the city council and the mayor to attend and help dedicate the building, but we're going to have a huge event for the public on Saturday, and we're hoping that we can empty the shelter out, so come on down and adopt a pet.
Thank you, Ed. And for those interested in Candy, please call 888-452-7381. And if you call and Candy has already been adopted, don't feel sad, we have hundreds of other animals that are looking for a home. Just come to one of our shelters, and I'm sure you will find a companion animal. So again, let me remind all of our city employees, we are in competition with the County of Los Angeles. We have, up to this date, a 100% adoption rate. Let's keep that 100% adoption rate, and somebody take Candy home with them today. Candy, you want to say anything?
Mr. Reyes would like to say a few words, Mr. Wesson.
Mr. Reyes?
I just wanted to thank my colleague for his presentations, and Ed, the new facility is in my district at 3201 Lacy Street. You can get there off the GO line, the Avenue 26 Cypress Park GO line. It's a state-of-the-art building, it's LEED certified, it's next to the freeway, so there's no excuse for not coming down. You can get there by train, get there right off the freeway, great spot, and I welcome all of you to help us take care of our...
We will have tours all day Saturday for anybody that wants to come out. It's very much a park-like setting, it's not your father's animal control, it's a very much a very fun place to bring the family.
And even though it's a nice place, the places in our home are much better than a shelter, so please, let's adopt Candy and all of the other dogs and cats. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Wesson. I'd like to now acknowledge Ms. Perry for our next presentation.
I'd like to now acknowledge Ms. Perry for our next presentation.
We have a special presentation for you this morning, Madam Chair, and I will start while we get the rest of the trio back in here. It's a pleasure to be joined here today by Marisol and Los Hermanos Carlos, who are here today to help celebrate the upcoming third annual South Los Angeles Bolero Festival. Marisol and Los Hermanos Carlos performed last year at our festival and were so impressive, we are honored to have them return again this year. In its third year, the South Los Angeles Bolero Festival celebrates the internationally popular music and dance style known as bolero in a day-long tribute to composers, performers, and dancers. Bolero is a slow, beautiful, romantic style of music that has caught worldwide attention and is drawing fans from not only Spanish-speaking countries but throughout Europe and Asia. This free all-day event will feature great performances by world-famous bolero singer Lucho Gattika, as well as live music and dance performances by Yadi Mori and his Salsa Orchestra, Marisol and Los Hermanos Carlos, Trio Casablanca, Esther Segovia and her tango dancers, and Mariachi Divas. In addition, young people from New Jefferson High School, Santi Education Complex, and Manual Arts will perform. The streets surrounding the park will play host to food and information booths for the community. The Bolero Festival is cosponsored by City Hearts, a nonprofit organization whose motto is "Kids Say Yes to the Arts." Established in 1984 by two criminal defense attorneys as a youth diversion program, City Hearts reaches more than 1,000 at-risk youth each year through free classes daily in its downtown Los Angeles studio that serves as a professional dance and theater space. The kids from City Hearts will perform a bolero dance on stage and take the opportunity to teach members of the audience some of their dance moves. So I hope all of you will join us this Sunday, October 1st, at the Central Avenue Jazz Park, located at the intersection of 42nd Place and Central Avenue in South Los Angeles. So... And now to motivate everyone further to please enjoy the music this coming Sunday from 12 to 7 at 42nd Place and Central Avenue, I would like to present to you Marisol y Los Hermanos Carlos. Remember the Bolero Festival, this Sunday, 12 noon to 7 p.m., 42nd Place, Central Avenue. And come and enjoy the music. Thank you so much.
I'd like to acknowledge Councilmember Alabange for our next presentation. If not Councilmember Rosendahl, are you ready? Well, Councilmember Rosendahl for our next presentation.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, from time to time, as everybody who watches this and is in the audience knows, we thank city employees for their dedication, their hard work, and their service to the people. It's my honor, living in the Pacific Palisades, one of my constituents, B Campbell. And let me read a little bit about it because you really need to hear what a trailblazer and the mark that she has left on our great city. B Campbell was born in White Plains, New York. She was raised in Texas and received a BA degree in International Relations and Organization from American University in Washington, DC. And she has two master's degrees in education and public administration from the Claremont School. B Campbell joined the city of Los Angeles in June of 1974, 32 years ago, in the CAO's office, which is the Chief Administrative Office. That is the place that deals with the budget folks and deals with every aspect of the city. So she got her hands involved in a lot of things over the 32 years. And let me just highlight two of them. Ride-sharing program. She was hired and she got involved and created and became the backdrop to the ride-sharing program. But more importantly, for all the women in this great city to know, that when she looked at salaries and looked at work and saw the difference between what a man gets and what a woman gets, she got heavily involved in that. B Campbell, she was assigned to the Employee Relations Division, was a participant in the tiger team that negotiated the comparable worth contracts for the city, which led to the provision of over 3,000 women-dominated jobs with significant salary adjustments based on comparisons with men in the same type of job, okay? This led the city to receive nationwide recognition as being the first major municipality to recognize the needs of reevaluating female employee jobs. Huge, B. Thank you for that. She was dubbed the comparable work guru for her research, reports, and negotiations on this and other stuff to deal with it that became an MOU, a Memorandum of Understanding. Her legacy after negotiating this memorandum of understanding was her ongoing reaction to Secretary's Day, now called Administrative Professionals Day, which she would be heard explaining raises, not roses, whenever asked to participate in festivities. B Campbell has had a remarkable 32-year career with the city. Over 30 years, she spent in the office of the CAO in numerous assignments: capital projects, civil defense. In fact, she was the first person hired on the emergency preparedness, and that was in 1978. Little did we know where we would be today. Public work, stormwater, wastewater system improvement programs, budget for planning and community development, departments and bureaus of sanitation, engineering, and street maintenance. B Campbell has accepted the call to indulge in a completely different thing now as a retiree. She's going to be traveling all over the world. She has her lovely daughter Sarah with her. We spend more time with her. And I just wish her continued happiness, success, and many travels. And I'd like to introduce the CAO, her boss, Bill Fujioka, to say a few words, too.
Very quickly, I had mentioned when another one of our retirees came that, you know, the honor it is to work with someone like the other person, but particularly B. I had the pleasure of promoting her to her last position as chief in our office. This is someone who, again, I tell folks that in the CAO, we touch a number of things. And with the risk of sounding flip, when you flush your toilet, they could be Campbell. It's humor because she had a responsibility for the sanitation budget for many, many years. And the big projects we have from NISs and ESs and the sewer interceptor lines and the fact that it's working right now and that it's working better than anything, B touched that in so many different ways. But we, there's something, we talk about public infrastructure and public services. This is an example of a public servant, and it was an honor to work with her and a pleasure to be part of this resolution. Thank you.
Now, here's the lovely certificate we're giving her, but I'll always remember, not roses, but raises for women. Please, say whatever you'd like to say, B.
Well, thank you very much. I've enjoyed a great deal my 32 years with the city, especially in the CAO's office, where you have so many opportunities to understand, learn about the city on so many different ways. I've worked in capital programming, space assignments, employee relations, emergency preparedness, and disaster recovery has been one of my last things. And I thoroughly enjoyed it and thank all of you for your support, and especially Mr. Fujioka and the staff members of the CAO's office. They've been a joy to work with. This is my daughter, Sarah.
Yes, Sarah.
Sarah grew up in the Palisades and a product of LAUSD schools, now a substitute teacher and a singer of opera at the Music Center. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd like to recognize next from the 4th Council District, Councilmember Tom Alabange.
Mr. President members, it's a great joy that I honor these young people who are part of the Clean and Green Team. As you know, the Clean and Green Team is a program of the Los Angeles Conservation Corps and has been putting training together for young people in our, thousands of young people in our middle schools and high schools across greater Los Angeles for over two decades. The program was founded to engage young people in doing something special for their communities and planting trees and cleaning and beautifying neighborhoods. And, Mr. President, did you know my first job was in a program similar to this at 425 San Fernando Road out of a sanitation yard where we had a summer beautification program? And I still remember the goodness of that program and what it did for the community. I want to salute Clean and Green and the young people who were involved because they've made a difference. And every morning, they meet near Sunset and Fountain, and they get together and they go out in the communities and make a difference. So I'm just very pleased to salute these young people on behalf of the Los Angeles City Council, seconded by Jan Perry, we all share this here, and you, Mr. Garcetti, as President. So with all of us in the chambers, take a look around. These are the people we serve. Let's salute the Clean and Green Team for the 4th District. Okay. And their great supervisor is Silvan de la Cruz, who is their great supervisor. Silvan, I want you to say a few words. I want you to pick one of these fine young people from Thomas Star King Middle School. All right, got to say a few words. Silvan, say a few words about them.
Good morning, everyone. The thing that the students get out of our program are just many, many positive things that have a real positive effect on their lives. They learn things about personal development, educational development, about goal-setting, and they provide a remarkable service to the community of Los Angeles. I think the city of Los Angeles is getting an incredible deal by supporting our program. We are a city-funded program, and we cannot exist without the support of the city of Los Angeles. So I'm very happy to be here today, and I'm happy to receive this recognition for our
This is Jennifer Rodman. She is a student at King Middle School in Los Angeles, a school that I went to years ago.
Where there's a new mural up.
That's right. A beautiful mural on the corner of Bates.
The lion and the lotus.
The lion. You got it. Jennifer. Say a few words. How do you like this job of Clean and Green and making a difference in your community? And how does it make you feel?
It feels, we feel good that we clean in different places and we help the community and...
And it's an inspiring role that you have to make a difference in the community. Would you please, again, join with me and give Jennifer and all the people here from the 4th District Clean and Green a big hand? You did a good job there. We're going to go back and take pictures. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. And finally, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Jose Wezar from the 14th Council District for one more presentation.
No. No, she's not.
While we're... Mr. Parks, I'd like to recognize you in the meantime.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to recognize some very special guests. A couple of people have been to the council a number of times, Dr. Geraldine Washington, the president of NAACP. Also, we have with her is Ms. Marlene Wilson, who's been here as a nominee for the Woman of the Year for the 8th District from the Top Women's Association. They're here today, and we're going to highlight that they, as part of the NAACP Youth Council, will be having their ad prep program at the Crenshaw United Methodist Church on 3740 Don Felipe tomorrow, 9 to 1 p.m. And two special guests, my daughter Michelle and my granddaughter, Bobby's oldest granddaughter is Deanna, and they're here. Deanna is the press relations for this program this week. Would you all stand and be acknowledged here?
All righty. Thank you very much, Mr. Parks. And now here from Councilmember Wezar.
How you doing, boss? Should we ask you to come? Buenos dias. Good morning. It is my pleasure to be here today with a group that is named the Expressados. They're here today with their families, and we're here to recognize and celebrate El Dia del Bracero, the Day of the Bracero. As many of you know, there was a bracero program that started in the 1940s here in the United States and ended in the 1960s, somewhere around 1967. This program was started because of the labor shortage due to World War II and the number of Americans who were shipped off to fight and defend this country. But with that labor shortage and the labor supply from Mexico, this country was able to continue to provide the agricultural products, build the railroads, and provide many of the products that our US Army men and women were serving. We're here today to honor them for the contributions to this country. We're here today to thank them, and we're here today to say we're with you in your struggles to get back the funds and recognition that has not been given to them for decades. The Comité de Expressados has more than 1,500 members in Los Angeles County. They are a group who fight daily for the wrongs that were committed to the braceros. Today, the comité works with braceros and their families to collect salaries that were never paid according to the original work contracts of the bracero program. Under those contracts, the braceros were deducted 10% of their salaries, which they deposited into Mexico banks. Sadly, much of that money was never collected, and it was forgotten. So today, we're here to say, thank you, braceros. Thank you for your contributions to this country, and we're with you in your struggle and your fight for dignity and to make sure you collect those wages that were stolen from you. It's actually personal to me as well. You see, my father, Simon, was a bracero. He was contracted by the US government in the 1950s to come throughout the Southwest to pick cotton, to pick asparagus, to work in Texas, Utah, Arizona, and California. He and my uncles would talk to me about what daily life was like. Meals, very small meals. uncles would talk to me about what daily life was like. Meals, very small meals, the basic necessities and a very small check. But with that very small check, there was also a deduction that was never accounted for and no one knew where it was going. And so I'm standing here today not only to stand with the Braceros, but also in memory of my father, who worked hard throughout Southwest and contributed to this country, although at times he felt that he was not able to get the dignity that he deserved. So with that, I want to present today a certificate to recognize all the Braceros who have worked throughout the United States and have contributed to what this country is today. You know, we had people fighting to defend our liberties, but we also had people here working to make sure that we, we contributed to the war and defended what this country is all about. So on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, I want to present to the Braceros on this Bracero's Day, this certificate of recognition to say we're with you in your struggle. Thank And now we have with us Baldomero Capiz, the president of the Comité de Expressados.
Buenos dias.
Good morning.
Aquí están aquellos que vinieron jóvenes fuertes, que vinieron a laborar a los campos, a la creación de la construcción del ferrocarril.
Here you are in front of, you see in front of you a lot of the young men that came to work here on the fields to collaborate on the construction of the railroads.
Aquellos que dejaron su juventud, dejaron sus familias, aquellos que contribuyeron a la enorme riqueza de la agricultura más poderosa del mundo.
You see here in front of you those who left their youth and their families behind, those who contributed to the growth of the enrichment and the greatest culture of the world.
Que es la agricultura de los Estados Unidos de Norteamérica.
Which is the agriculture of the United States of America.
A ellos se les debe el haber alimentado al ejército norteamericano, que en aquel entonces se encontraba en guerra contra el fascismo de Europa y Asia.
It is so to them, the nutrition and the feeding of the great American military that at that time was at gray war with the massive European communities.
De los cuales se enrolaron en ese contrato binacional 4.5 millones de mexicanos, que elaboraron en todo el país de los Estados Unidos.
And through that collaboration, they were able to register 4.5 million Mexicans to collaborate with him and work throughout the whole country of the United States.
El gobierno norteamericano en aquel entonces les llamó soldados del surco.
At that time, the North American government called them soldiers from the South.
Porque sin ellos hubiera sido posible ganar la guerra en contra del fascismo.
Because without them, it would have been impossible to win the war against fascism.
En ese contrato binacional, se estableció que debería descontarse un 10% de sus salarios de trabajo.
In that binational contract, it was established to have 10% of their salary deducted.
Del cual estaba bajo custodia por acuerdo federal en los bancos norteamericanos Wells Fargo y Union Trust Company.
Which was in the custody of Wells Fargo and Union Bank.
Union Bank Trust.
Trans, Union Bank Trans, those two federal banks.
De lo cual, los expertos hablan, abogados expertos que vivieron el caso del aniquilamiento judío de Alemania, habla de que se les debe y se les saludaba a deuda cerca de 500 a mil millones de dólares.
Expert attorneys that also participated in the liquidation of the funds from the Jewish in those eras, they say now that about 500 to 100 million dollars is owed to them.
Los bancos norteamericanos cumplieron con su cometido, enviaron el recurso a México, pero creemos que parte de ese recurso se quedó aún aquí en los Estados Unidos de Norteamérica.
The North American banks, they complied with their compromise and they sent part of that money to Latin America, to Mexico. But we still believe that part of the money remained here in this country.
Por eso nuestra demanda, en la cual nosotros representamos 300,000 en México y en los Estados Unidos, del total de los 4.5 millones, que todavía viven, alrededor de medio millón de ellos, estamos buscando justicia para ellos.
That's on behalf of the 300,000 of them whom we represent, many of whom are in Mexico, many of whom are here, of a total of 4.5 million, around half a million still live here with their families.
Esto es un poco de historia para que conozcan la vida del migrante.
This is just a bit of history so that you are knowledgeable of the life of an immigrant.
Del trabajador.
Of the worker.
Del obrero.
Of the labor.
Del campesino.
Of the field worker.
Del que trabaja en los hoteles.
Who works in the hotels.
Del que cuida niños.
Who takes care of children.
De todos aquellos que elaboran en cualquier situación que vivan dentro de este país.
And all those who work in any situation while they live here in this country, the United States.
Este es un ejemplo donde se sustentan las bases de la economía de este gran país y gracias a la contribución de la mano de obra de los trabajadores migrantes, principalmente mexicanos y de Latinoamerica.
And this is the basis through which the great economy is supported in this country and thanks in great part to the hand, the labors of all these workers, which in great part are Mexicans. Thank you.
Agradecemos, agradecemos profundamente este homenaje que se les brinda a ellos como una recordación al concejal y honorable José Wezar y al honorable Consilio de esta ciudad de Los Ángeles. Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much for this recognition from.
Viva los Braceros!
Viva!
Viva los Braceros!
Viva!
Y si se puede.
Viva los Braceros!
Gracias.
Thank you, thank you very much, councilmembers, for your diligence in the time. And I also want to recognize the father of Councilmember Tony Gardenes, who is also a Bracero. Y finalmente les quería decir que yo como alguien nativo de Zacatecas, México, en la cual que mi padre era un Bracero, estamos aquí con ustedes. Hay que seguir la lucha y de parte de este Consilio de la Ciudad de Los Ángeles, les damos las gracias por toda la que he hecho por este país. Muchísimas gracias a los Braceros. Viva los Braceros!
Thank you very much. Muchísimas gracias por su presencia. Thank you so much for being here. And thank you, Councilmember Wezar, for that presentation. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardenas Gruel, Han Wezar LaBange, Padilla Parks, Perry Reyes, Rosenthal Smith, Vice-Weston Zion Garcetti, 12 members present in the quorum, Mr. President.
For the quorum, if we can please run through the agenda, our first order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
I think Mr. Smith wants to move those minutes and Mr. Rosenthal enthusiastically seconds. If there's no objection, those will be approved. Next order of business?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Han moves and Mr. Padilla seconds. Thank you both. If there's no objection, we will unanimously approve those. Next order of business.
On the regular agenda, items for which public hearings have been held, items 1 through 23, reports have been submitted on 15, 20, and 21.
Okay. Colleagues, any specials on items 1 through 23, Ms. Perry?
Item 18 until next Wednesday.
Okay, item 18. If there's no objection, we will continue that till next Wednesday. That'll be the 4th of October. So ordered, yes. Ms. Han.
For Councilwoman Gruel, I'd like to call item 13.
Okay. I know Mr. Reyes wanted that special as well, so we will call 13 special. Other specials, colleagues? Any other specials? Seeing none, let's open the roll. Let's close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next items, Mr. President, are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration and those numbers are 24 through 56.
Alrighty. If there's no objection to 15 through 17 being sent forth with, let's do that, 15, 16, and 17. On the other items that are before us, colleagues, any specials?
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Han.
Yes. Again, for Councilwoman Gruel, I'd like to call item 38 and 39. And for Councilmember Wezar, I'd like to call item 40.
You're just a great team player.
I know. Take one. Anybody else want me to help him out here this morning?
Alrighty. 40 for Mr. Wezar, 38 and 39 through Gruel, for Gruel. Any other specials, colleagues from the council? We do have cards on 36 and 37. We also have card on 41. And there's some that are being sorted out right now. Just want to make sure they're not in, we have 38. That's already been called special. And any other ones above that?
36.
36 we already have. And 22 we already passed. Okay. So let's open the roll on the balance. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved. If we can recess that and go into the special meeting, please call the roll.
Cardenas Gruel, Han Wezar LaBange, Padilla Parks, Perry Reyes, Rosenthal Smith, Vice-Weston Zion Garcetti, 12 members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, first item, please.
First item is an item for which public hearing has been held. It's a Trade Commerce Tourism Committee report.
Okay. Anybody wishing to call it special? If not, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
As approved. Next items?
Items 2 and 3 are items for which public hearings have not been held.
Okay, we will open and close the public hearings on those items. Anybody wishing to call them special? 2 and 3. Yes, Mr. Parks?
A motion circulating that will be out, just a second, just to amend some language for the CAO to.
Which number? On number 2?
Yeah, 2.
Okay, on special 2? Okay.
Is that on, Mr. Parks, is that on the special meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
That deals with the grant.
This is the LAPD Treasury Law Enforcement Agency's.
Yes, it's just an instruction for the CAO to do some analysis.
We'll hold that special, Mr. Parks, until we get that out. Anybody wishing to call 3 special? If not, let's open the roll on item 3, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay. If we can continue item 2 into the regular meeting, please. All right, now it's time for public comment. I'd like to call forward for public comment. Zuma Dog first.
Bill Rosenthal, you get a pass today because there's too many other things to talk about, but man, I'll be talking about you. I can't believe you're on the side of the mayor with LAUSD. I wonder if Bill knows with this LAUSD thing that it's the superintendent will be in control of all monies spent. $20 billion in facilities money that's going to be in the hands of one person with no accountability. There's no requirement of an attorney general, inspector general, to check for fraud, waste, and abuse. And why is the school superintendent looking over a real estate empire bigger than Donald Trump? We'll get to that later, okay? But, and also soft on crime. He gets in the way of the police enforcing Skid Row, all right, Bill? And then he pops up marijuana clinics on Venice Beach. But like I say, a lot of other things. I'd like to invite everybody to join Zuma Dog and Mayor Antonio Villagrosa at Hazard Park tomorrow, 12 noon, to kick off the Million Trees LA Initiative. And we'll be talking about more of that later. I'd also like to mention that there's two important ballot, ballot measures coming up in November. We need to start talking about it now. First one is H. It's a bond measure. And let me explain how these bond measures work. First of all, they wrap it up in some warm and fuzzy thing like clean water, affordable housing, money for the schools. However, this is a billion dollars and what I understand is really $10 billion and this is just a down payment. Then you take this money, we'll be paying the, we don't have the money, okay? So we create a bond. We'll be paying interest for the next three generations. The problem with bonds, no accountability, no checks and balances, money we don't have. We'll be paying interest for generations and from what I understand, very little of that money actually makes it to where it's supposed to be going to. Guess where the rest goes? Yeah, yeah, into the back pocket of the mayor and then he pays everybody off in his one big party. So Zuma Dog will be not voting on, he'll be voting no on H. Zuma Dog will be voting no on H. So I encourage everybody to listen to what I'm doing because I've looked into it. So remember, bond H, oh, you only got one minute? No, R. R's even worse, y'all. Vote no on R too because we'll be paying a lifetime of healthcare pension.
If I could ask you, Mr. Dog, to keep your voice down, please? Thank you. Thank you. All right, Bruce Darian is the next speaker out in the San Fernando Valley. Bruce Darian, 2 minutes, please.
Morning, City Council. My name is Bruce Darian. I'm here once again to talk about the corruption, the state fraud in building and renovating the Malibu Pier. The city has taken the position it's not in the jurisdiction of the city of Los Angeles. However, I've contended that there are officials that are connected with the fraud. With election time now, we can see that the state has done everything to cover up the corrupt activity in rebuilding a state historic landmark. All of us have paid for it, including the members of the city council through your taxes as Californians. There isn't anybody that resides in Los Angeles that is not affected by the corruption in the construction project of the Malibu Pier. Also, the fact that there's never been any substantial fines that have been issued for any of the massive discharging and illegal discharging under the Clean Water Act to Malibu Creek and Los Angeles River is a testament to the fact that the public officials have been hiding this long-term violation to the environment and to us as citizens of the United States. I've been a whistleblower under the False Claims Act. I've been retaliated against by the Sheriff's Department, the County of Los Angeles, the State of California, the other contractors. The state has knowingly run an illegal contracting operation by contracting out-of-business entity, the person or the contractor. Those licenses are not transferable. The Contractors Board has been notified and has covered this all up. It's time now the public take some action on this massive Watergate-style scandal. And believe me, it's gone all the way up to the president. The federal government is involved, the FBI is involved, the U.S. Department of Justice. And it's time now that we take action against this government criminal activity. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Sylvia Lynn Hawkins here in council chambers. Ms. Hawkins?
Good morning. My name is Sylvia Lynn Hawkins. This is my final warning to all churches, local governments, on their membership workers in United States of America, we no longer have the use of any more cell phones in cars, hand device, or building device equipment running through outside streets, wiring into street lights, antennas or trees, or trees on sidewalks. This will not, this will not, no longer work because our farm life, wildlife, wilderness has lost their crop. Businesses will not be able to continue your attack of chores on the public people. Since over 70% devices has been captured since the LAX plane attacks of all different devices, we are aware that all public people that are holding cell phones do not have, do have ear devices in their ears. They have helped, these people have had major operation of earpieces operation to keep their robot brain functioning. We will also soon be counseling out of the United States of America government, all electric shock treatment for mental illness and death row, death sentence for electric shock. The final answer is neck augmentation and this route of electric shock has been beaten. Neck augmentation must begin now because of devices that they have had which dealing with operation in their ear that they can't overcome death sentence, death row, and electric shock. Thank you very much. My name is Sylvia Hawkins.
Thank you, Ms. Hawkins. Arnold Sacks is our next speaker.
Good morning, councilmembers. First, I'd like to thank you, Mr. Garcetti, for not allowing me to speak on Wednesday about the charter school issue that was before the city council. But it gave me a chance to, to put my thoughts together. I believe the problem was that they have 114 students and they're 40 students over the amount they're allowed to have. We have a question whether it's enrollment or students on the, on the campus. Since they have four classes of kindergarten students, they have an AM session and a PM session. The AM session has 40 students in it. When the AM session is over, the 40 students leave and the PM session arrives with its 40 students, which means the total never exceeds 114 people. I don't know if the city council has or the city attorney has the right to limit. I don't know if the city council has, or the city attorney has the right to limit the number of students that can enroll at the school. If they, if they're not allowed to limit the number of students that enroll at the school, then the school is not exceeding its CUP. Their other campus has three hundred students. They're not, and those students are all there full-time, so they can't add any more students. Now, next year, when the eighty students move up to first grade, if that's what they do, then their kindergarten will only have slots for thirty-four students. You have one hundred and fourteen minus thirty-four. That means you'll have an AM class of thirty-four and a PM class of thirty-four. The problem that you're running into is if LA, if the city council is taking over LA Unified School District, how will they address this problem with charter schools, if it is a problem? The president of the charter school mentioned that the state pays them for a full day of kindergarten classes or a half-day of kindergarten classes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sacks. Appreciate your comments. Our next speaker is Candido Morris.
Good morning, Mr. President, council members. I'm back. Tuesday, I had one broken leg. Today, I have two. And as I told Mr. Deaton, I'd rather die on my feet than live the rest of my life on my knees. I know you folks are busy, but this weekend, if you're free, there's a movie I'd like you to see. It was called North Country. Came out a few years ago, and it was about the struggles of a woman that all she wanted to do was work, and work without sexual harassment and retaliation. And one of the things that was said in the movie, it was when asked, one of the individuals asked, "What do you do when those who have all the power abuse those who have none?" You stand up. You stand up, and even if you stand up alone. And Ms. Han, that's what you did for DWP employees when they came here and brought forth allegations of retaliation. And that's why the city workers and the neighborhood councils look to you as a future candidate for mayor when the mayor moves on to the governorship. So, thank you for that. There was a female worker that worked for DWP that came to our committee and stated that she felt like she was a rape victim, and everybody was just standing and watching and allowing the abuse to take place. Mr. President, council members, I'm asking you, I'm asking you, and I'm begging you, to stand up and ask the general managers throughout the department to stop the abuse that takes place of our city workers. Thank you.
Thank you. Matthew Dowd is our next speaker.
Thank you very much. Yeah, my name is Matthew Dowd. And one of the reasons I could be forgiven for using another name is because I don't want to be confused with the guy who got George Bush re-elected in the last presidential election. His name's Matthew Dowd. And believe it or not, anyone who's listening to me, yesterday's LA Times, if you read the LA Times, now Matthew Dowd is with the governor. He's switched over to Rani now. Here he is, and I'm going to quote, because, you know, this is page A twenty-three, September twenty-eighth, two thousand and six. Schwarzenegger campaign strategist Matthew Dowd called the attempts to tie Schwarzenegger to Bush a waste of time. Voters don't see the relationship between Bush and this governor's race, Dowd said. And every day they spend talking about is a good day for us. So, it's probably better not to say too many bad things about Matthew Dowd in public, because they might think you're talking about this guy. And he's done a great job, huge job, and, but I did dig out what I was talking about, Mr. Smith. It doesn't say Dowds take heat over plan, it says Garcettys take heat over the plan. That's what I was talking about, but I was down at the meeting today at the Oceanfront Walk. What a joke, no representation from the LAPD, no councilman's representative there. They just push through their agenda. They really, they don't do anything. Now, honestly, with the boardwalk, we've got a guy down there, Bill, a resident, one resident, he goes, "Oh, I live on the boardwalk, and I want to move these people because of the noise." And I'm like, that's like moving to Disneyland and saying, "Oh, the rides are too noisy. I just moved here. Let's shut down the rides in Disneyland." I want to give a big hooty-hoo to Janice, and Ed, and Jose Weezer.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dowd.
I love your work, and you're in, you're in the good club.
Good morning, City Council. Mr. Smith, I think you should listen to this, because I think that you should listen to us, just like we listen to you. And we, we caught you on TV going like, you know, you don't even listen to us. We listen to you. First thing is, Bill, I was at that meeting, too, at Oceanfront Walk. It's sad that the boardwalk has taken a plunge and things like that. I haven't been home yet, so I haven't been able to take a look at the reply to my lawsuit yet. And then, things are going to change. You need to really focus on putting people back to work like the community was built up and making it the second-largest tourist attraction. And on that note, I'm going to leave that alone, but my homeless shelters are going up sometime next week in the city of Los Angeles. They also need to be funded and have beds for them. It is real. We will house over sixty people in the next two weeks at our pilot location, which is in Herb Wesson's district. It's for real, Herb. I would always give back to my community and make sure that for those who want to be successful, be successful, and things like that. Ms. Han, you did a wonderful job with the, with the, with the school district and things like that. And actually, so did Mr. Weiss. You can't, you know, children need to be in their neighborhoods. I do believe that, and I support you fully on that. Charter schools are a lot better than regular schools. I think if there's five schools located where nobody's using them, I think that we should go out and find locations. You know, I think that's all of our responsibility, to go out and find locations in San Fernando Valley. So, you know, I hope to see everybody out there. I hope the police is not arresting people on Skid Row. And, Bill, homeless issue, I'm coming to your neighborhood, too, so.
Thank you. Close our public comment for today. If we can run through the agenda now, please.
Mr. President, item number twenty-three was adopted previously. However, there is an amending motion that has been distributed. Do you wish to reconsider that?
Sure, why don't we reconsider item twenty-three or open the roll on reconsideration? If there's no objection on that vote, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, let's call that special. Has it already been circulated?
Yes, it has been.
Okay, let's go ahead and vote on that, then. Let's open the roll on twenty-three as amended, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Takes us to item thirteen, is that correct?
Yes, and that was called special by Councilmember Grul.
Ms. Grul, were you calling thirteen special for Mr. Reyes? I know he, or are you calling it for his... Okay, I know he also wanted to call it special.
I was calling it myself, but if Mr...
Why don't we start with you, then, and we'll...
Thirteen, yeah. You start, I'll go after you.
Okay. We'll begin with Mr. Reyes, and then Ms. Grul.
Thank you, Congressman Grul. Council President, colleagues, we are passing out a map that speaks to a program, the Battery and Sharps Program, by safe service area. I want to commend, commend the committee for their work. As you can tell by the notes and report given to us, that they'll be reporting back in a year to see how a proposed pilot program can expand. They'll be seeking guidance in how to move forward in this program, which essentially allows e-waste to go into other containment areas that are sponsored by Walgreens. So, thank you, Walgreens, for stepping up, and as the private sector could in dealing with our environmental issues. If you look at the map, Walgreens tends to locate where it deems it wants to be. But as you can see on the map, there are whole sections in East LA, Northeast, South LA, South Central, good part of Venice, good part of the eastern part of the valley that does not have a Walgreens. If you were to overlay other types of establishments, you probably wouldn't find the Whole Foods, you wouldn't find the other types of retail centers that you would find in the smaller or suburban areas. To that end, I'd like to do a friendly amendment to ask the department to work with the Community Development Department and the CRA to identify incentives so that independent stores who do not have the wherewithal or the staying power as a Walgreens to also participate in the e-waste. So, if we can do that, the areas that do not have Walgreens, if we were to overlay another map that speaks to the hot zones where trash and other debris accumulates, they would be where the Walgreens don't exist. So, if we could complement and learn from this program and use the CDD and CRA to leverage their incentives to induce the smaller independents to participate, we'd have a higher capacity, a greater capacity of capturing the e-waste, and again, cleaning our city and lowering down the levels of contamination and waste in the hot zones that tend to be in the areas where you don't find Walgreens. So, I hope you can see this map and use this map as a reference. So, I appreciate your support, and as a friendly amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grul.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti, and thank you, Mr. Reyes. I mean, this is, when it came before, our Environment Committee, a few weeks ago, was thrilled with this recommendation, because we all know, I can tell you, I have a bag of batteries and old cars, excuse me, old cars, old phones that we have all had, and it's about convenience. It's just like recycling our waste. If it's there and easy, people are going to do it. And so, I appreciate the, I think it's Walgreens, Circuit City, and Best Buy have demonstrated some interest in participating in this program. So, as you go to those locations, you can drop off your e-waste, because right now, there are a few locations, but not very convenient to some of our constituents. And we all know that convenience is critical to getting people to participate in these types of programs. So, I wanted to just stand up and say, congratulations, this is fabulous, and to encourage as this program begins, and I know we talked to the department about all of our kind of public service announcements and getting this information out there to make people sure that they're aware of these locations. Because I get emails frequently from some of my constituents that say, "It's too far to drive up to Sun Valley," as one of the only locations in the San Fernando Valley. And will I make it there on the days that they're open? Will I be able to get in and get there before, after work, or on the weekends when you're running various errands? So, this will make it convenient and easy to do the right thing and to protect our environment. And so, I stand and wholeheartedly support this item before us today. Thank you very much, Ms. Perry.
Thank you, Ms. Grul. Mr. Reyes, for the second time.
And I truly am grateful for the progress we're making in the context of how we're working with these stores, but the fact that our colleagues are actually conducting studies in how we could entice investments of that type into certain parts of the city because they don't exist there. We don't have Circuit Cities, we don't have Best Buys, we don't have Walgreens in whole sections of our city. What I'm asking, if maybe someone from the department is here, if we could, and if I'd like to ask for a second, if we can create incentives, working with CDD and CRA, so that the independent stores that essentially, for lack of a better word, dominate these areas where you don't find the Walgreens, which tends to be in East LA, in Northeast, in South LA, all of San Pedro, a good part of the western part of the valley. So, again, I'm complimenting you. I think it's great. You're being creative, we're working with the private sector, but the fact that we have to work extra harder to create incentives for the independents where these stores don't exist, do you feel we can do that within the year's time, as you learn through this pilot program? Mike, please.
They need a mic.
Neil Guglielmo, Bureau of Sanitation, Seabury Recycling. Thank you. It's an excellent question, council members. What you have before you is our proposal to partner with the retailers. The first retailer that we have sought out under this program has been Walgreens. And largely, that's because Walgreens has a very similar program up in the city of San Francisco, in the San Francisco Bay Area. They have, their stores up there will take the universal waste items such as Sharps, Needles, Alkaline Batteries, and such from residents. They also have some smaller stores that could be single-owner type stores that provide the same sort of convenience to the public for other items, such as, you know, small hardware stores collecting fluorescent tubes and bulbs. So, that's part of our program as well. What we're trying to do right now is work with retailers that have, say, a number of stores. Walgreens is one, other pharmacies, CVS, Rite Aid, Long's, Drud, Savon's, whole improvement stores such as Home Depot, Lowe's, Ace Hardware, Osh, Do-It Centers for e-waste. We're looking at Office Depot, Circuit City, and Best Buys. And we'll also be working with smaller retailers as well. We do want to have complete coverage of the city, so that it's not just our safe centers, it's all of our partner retailers who can provide this collection ability. The benefit they receive is, when you go, and when I go into a Home Depot, I bring my old batteries with me or my old light bulbs, so I know which ones I need to get to replace them. The same thought happens here, is the retailers will have increased business as the public comes to drop these items off. They actually patronize the store more. They will buy things when they walk through the store towards the back to drop your items off. It's about ten to fifteen percent increase in sales for the stores participating in San Francisco Bay Area. Would expect the same sort of benefit to our stores here. We give them the containers, we provide the signage, we educate their employees for the stores, and then we actually provide the collection services for free to the stores, so that it's free to the public, it's free to the stores. The stores show their commitment to the surrounding community and to the environment by participating with us. They get some free publicity, as we do mailers, handouts, and flyers, and education to the public. We're letting them know what stores they can go to drop these items off at. So, we see as a really good first step.
So, if I were to connect the dots here, and I were to look at the places where in the map it doesn't show Walgreens, those also tend to be the places with the highest densities, and they'll also be the places where you have the highest level of trash and hot zones, trash hot zones. So, if you could work with the Community Development Department, Community Redevelopment Agency, they have whole files of small business people that are trying to get assistance. You have a database that gives you names and addresses of people who are in the first five years of business. So, imagine if you were to go to them and allow them the same benefits as these bigger companies, not only will you capture the e-waste from these very dense parts of our city, but you'd also be leveraging resources from the city to make that store that much more viable. So, I'm trying to connect these dots in providing a support system, a fiscal economic support system based on environmental waste, just like you described it.
Councilman Reyes, Jorge Santiago Esteban, Citywide Recycling. We have seen the map, and the map was prepared by my group, and I certainly see...
And I compliment you.
And I certainly see, we want to expand this program citywide, and certainly what you're saying, we started with Walgreens because they have a similar program in San Francisco, but we want to go to anybody and offer them the same opportunities, whether there be Walgreens, CVS, or the small mom and pop, because what we want to do is really make it convenient for our residents and make it closest as possible to our residents. We have safe centers, but certainly those safe centers, we cannot put any safe centers, you know, in every corner, but we do have the ability to partner with these companies and promote in a way, and I think the benefit to these companies would be that hopefully they would have an increased food traffic for their business, because if I'm going to go to this company to buy a battery, well, if they have the convenience of dropping the battery, you know, it would be a win-win situation. So, what we're asking is to allow us, council to allow us, to start with this program, and it is our intent to enlarge it, because it's going to, in a way, save us money, it make, it will make it more convenient to our residents, and people will not have to wait for the safe center to be open on weekends, and they would be able to do it every, every day of the week.
I believe we're saying the same thing. I read the report. I'm complimenting you. Kudos to you. Great pilot program. All I'm asking is that within that year, in your pilot process, if you could work with CDD and CRA, identify those independent stores, those mom and pops, and come back to us and tell us, "How did that work? What were your barriers? What could make it efficient to get these centers to capture this waste in these parts of the city that does not have the luxury and/or the market benefit of these large chains?" That's all I'm asking. If I can get a second on that friendly motion? Thank you very much. All right, folks are listening, all right.
We're with you, babe.
Thank you. So, I appreciate that, and again, again, my wanting to have this is, is, is very urgent, because I really think if we're going to meet our TMDL goals, our tax, total maximum daily loads, these are the kinds of incremental steps that you're performing that's going to get us there. But we have to concentrate on these hot trash zones, and I... But we have to concentrate on these hot trash zones, and I appreciate your hard work.
Thank you. It has been our intent to make it as convenient to all of our residents and to have as many as possible everywhere in the city.
Beautiful. So I'll be looking forward to how CDD, CRA, what you went through, who actually got the benefit, all that good stuff.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. There are no, no further speakers in the queue. So Madam Clerk, would you please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote?
Twelve ayes.
Next item.
Next item is item 36, and that was called special for cards from the public.
All right. Our first speaker is Mr. Zuma Dog.
Oh, yes. I'm just going to be brief on this because, you know, I say, go ahead and do it. It's about legislation condemning violent video games. I'd just like to say, you really can't prevent people from being violent because of video games, just like you can't prohibit alcohol to stop people drinking, just like you can't make marijuana illegal to keep people from smoking it. You know, of course, these games are bad. They set a bad precedent. I don't think anybody's out there doing crimes because of video games. So go ahead and do it, but just don't get a false sense of hope because you really can't stop people from doing these things just because you're not going to be advertising during Barney. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Mr. Michael Hunt.
Video games, huh? Let the kids play the video games. I don't think that causes violence. You guys have a good Friday, and let's get out of here.
Our next speaker will be Mr. Matthew Dowd.
First question, why are we still here? I mean, after all this time, why are we still here? God, someone needs to answer that question for me. But look, I will stay on the topic. Dion, thanks. The key word, I think, in this whole motion, if you want to ask Matthew Dowd, the political strategist, it says condemns the proliferation of violent video games and discourages marketing. Now, marketing is the key word here. See, people who run these commercial companies, just like the city does, you send people out to evaluate, you send people out to look at Owens River and see how much water you can take. You send people all over the place to do things. And that's what these companies do. See, they have marketing executives, and, and they don't bring out these games if there is no demand for them. And obviously, there is, because that's what the people want. And I'm not saying it's right. I'm not saying it's wrong. But it's the condition of society now that obviously that's what they want, because they want to release their frustration. And they can do it in a video game by doing things they can't do on the street. And, but I, you know, it's, it's political, this whole thing. It's like, you're just trying to get points, trying to get points by condemning some commercial thing. And I mean, it all sounds good, but you ought to be putting money into programs that address the social issues that cause these things, not just going, oh, we want to condemn that because I don't like it.
Thank you very much. There are no further speakers in the queue. Madam Clerk, would you please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote?
Twelve ayes.
Next item, please.
Item 37, called special for cards from the public.
First speaker will be Mr. Arnold Sacks.
Good morning. I'd just like to mention that the city is now acting regarding the G8 summit meeting that was held in July of 2006. When is the calendar year for the federal legislative program relative to, relative to the city? In any case, anybody's waiting for somebody to arrive on the Titanic, it sank. What about Martin Luther King Hospital? That's just been partially closed. Why doesn't the city make a statement regarding the county supervisors' actions that led to that closing?
Thank you very much. Our next speaker will be Mr. Zuma Dog.
My name's Zuma Dog. I'm running for LA City Council. Hello to everybody watching on TV 35. I'd like to give a shout out to Bill O'Reilly. He had me on his show this morning. I actually made the call from right here inside City Council chambers. Talk about the G8. I hate to sound like a conspiracy theorist, because that's what you sound like when you start talking about these things. But some people spend a lot of time providing me with information about G8. It just happened to be on the agenda today. Yeah, yeah, power to the people, y'all. Here's the thing about G8. You got Canada, the United States, Great Britain, France, Germany, Russia, Japan, and Italy. And some people are saying this is trying to create a one world government. You know, it's just a big government corporation. So let's see, just remember, G8, it sounds like a one world government, a globalization and all that. But I don't want to get too conspiratorial theory on it. So maybe some of you can, I'd like to yield my time to council, and maybe they can comment on this. Yeah, yeah. Zuma Dog, I'll be on KBC. And tomorrow, Jose Weisar's district with the mayor, Million Trees LA. That'll be coming up next. Zuma Dog for City Council.
Thank you very much. There are no more additional cards, no speakers in the queue. Madam Clerk, would you please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote?
Eleven ayes.
Next item, please.
Item 38, called special by Councilmember Grul, and I believe there are cards on the public, from the public also.
All right. Thirty-eight ayes. First speaker will be Mr. Matthew Dowd.
Sorry, I was just bailed out by a guy asking me where he gets the list of things that you're not allowed to do in LA that you are allowed to do in San Diego. I don't know what that means, but maybe someone can tell me. Yeah, this is a, this is a good one. This really is a good one. And so this is the kind of resolution that really does do something for real. Because children die in motor vehicles, and people are just too lazy to unstrap them, take them out, and put them in the shop. Now, I brought up three kids, and so I know what I'm talking about. Never leave your kids in a car. People steal motor vehicles. You end up finding your kid, you know, in some locked up car in some suburb across the other side of town. It's not pretty, and it's not fun. So, you know, this kind of thing, Caitlin's Law, you know, there's a lot of political debate, but that's all just political, you know, propaganda. These people use this. This is, this is a real one. And I'd like to know what the penalties are right now. I wouldn't have thought you could make them any stiffer, but obviously, they just weren't stiff enough in the first place. And I'm putting up a video tonight of my cat on YouTube.
Thank you very much. We have no further speaker cards. Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Grul would like to speak.
Very much, Ms. Perry. This item before us is asking that we support legislation that would amend Caitlin's Law to provide stiffer penalties for people who leave children alone in a motor vehicle. Just a few months ago, in both, actually, 38 and 39, I participated in a press event at Irwin Street Elementary School in my district, where there was a demonstration on a number of issues which really spoke to children, the dangers related to a vehicle. I know, every year, we hold a press conference as well to educate people about Caitlin's Law. But what we talked about in talking to Caitlin's family is that $100 is just not enough incentive for someone to not leave their kid in the car. Obviously, we hope they do the right thing and not leave their kid in the car. But we know that people sometimes react differently when there are financial penalties associated with it. And in this instance, if you know that violation of going in a carpool lane is $300, but a violation for leaving your kid in a car is $100. And so we ask that this, you know, move forward, and I hope it was seconded by Mr. Padilla and Mr. Weiss. And I know Mr. Padilla and his new role can take a leadership position on this. And one study has found that cars parked outside a day with a 72-degree temperature outside, which seems pretty reasonable, can see their interior temperatures rise to over 100 degrees in less than a half hour. And so I think this is a critically important law that we can help push and support on the state level, and would ask that we have an aye vote today by the city council. Thank you very much, Ms. President.
Thank you very much. Mr. Weisar is our next speaker.
Thank you. I just want to thank my colleague, Councilwoman member Grul, for bringing this to our attention. We all know that none of us, and all of us, would be outraged when we see a child being locked in the car. But frankly, $100 to penalize someone for that is just simply not enough. As you pointed out, with car lanes, I know that some jaywalking tickets are more than that here around City Hall. So I want to thank Ms. Grul and just raise the awareness. And hopefully, the city could also play a much larger role in whatever our Department of Transportation or Department of Police can do to raise the awareness about this, should this become law, and through state legislative action. Thank you so much, Ms. Grul, for bringing this to our attention.
Mr. Padilla is our next speaker.
Thank you, Madam President. Just two quick comments. One is, obviously, I'm full in support, especially because you know it gets hotter in the valley than anywhere else in the city of Los Angeles. And second, if my memory serves me correctly, I believe the governor just signed a bill increasing penalties for people who leave pets in their cars when it gets hot. And I believe our children deserve at least the same protection. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. There's no further speakers in the queue. Madam Clerk, would you please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote?
Eleven ayes.
Next item.
Item 39, called special by Councilmember Grul.
All right. Ms. Grul, we do have one speaker card on that.
I will be brief. That, as I mentioned the last item, that I participated in this press conference at Irwin Street Elementary School. And we had a speaker that day. You may, you may remember the professor at Irvine University, who, as he was driving to work and had his child in the backseat and got distracted and went into work and forgot that he had his child in the backseat asleep. And unfortunately, that child died. And this man spoke that day at this press conference very emotionally, talking about what had happened to him, and that he believes very strongly that not only should we educate parents about that, that risk, and some ideas of how they can make sure they leave their briefcase or their purse or whatever next to their child in the backseat to remind them. But there are some things that we're looking at on the federal level. And before you today is support of Senate Bill 1948 and HR 2230, which is the Cameron Gulbrinson Kids and Car Safety Act of 2005, which would provide additional measures in vehicles to protect our children. A study by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention reports that 9,100 children are treated in hospital emergency rooms due to non-traffic incidences. And when you, you look at some of the things they're suggesting, they're not very difficult. And I know they've been working with the auto industry to see if, in fact, some of these can be implemented and passed this legislation. Just want to highlight three of those items that are included in this legislation. One is to ensure that power windows that you have in your vehicle automatically reverse direction when they detect an obstruction, a child's hand, a child's neck, if they've stuck their head out the window, to prevent children from being trapped, injured, or unfortunately killed. The second is to contain a driver notification system that would alert drivers if passengers remain in the rear seats of the vehicle once your ignition is turned off. And it seems like such a simple thing, but it will save lives. And lastly, is to contain a rearward, rear, excuse me, rearward visibility performance standard that will provide drivers with an unobstructed view of the area behind the vehicle in order to prevent backing up incidences. The day we had the press conference at Irwin Street Elementary School, they placed 22 kids behind a vehicle. That's how many kids they would not be able to see if they were sitting in an SUV. And so this is very, very important legislation. These, this bill would require that all passenger vehicles be in compliance by the year 2010. We can take a stand today and say that we think it is important to have these on the vehicles here in the US and have legislation that provides that leadership. So I'd ask for an aye vote today. Thank you very much, Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Madam, sorry, Ms. Grul, yes.
Madam.
Two speakers on this item. The first is Mr. Matthew Dowd.
Thank you, Matthew Dowd, here on the record. This is a, this isn't a bad one, but I, sometimes I think, man, am I getting smarter or are people just getting dumber? You got to tell them to look in the backseat to see if their kids are in there. You know, this reminds me of Everybody Loves Raymond, Robert Barone. They wouldn't, he wouldn't have had that story where he got left in a gas station. His parents came and got in the car and didn't check if he was in the car even. But now we got to check that they're in there to take him out. The backing over one, I mean, that is a good one, but it's more of an indictment on the SUV in a, in an urban environment. I mean, that's, that's the real crucial thing is if restrict the use of those vehicles, you know, on, on city streets, especially single occupants. You know, that drives me crazy seeing so many single occupant SUVs on the freeways burning up countless tons of fuel, tons of pollution into the atmosphere. It's all drifting out into the, into the east. So that's, that's another issue, and I'm surprised, well, see, he's on the phone, so I can talk about Disneyland right now if I want. But anyway, I don't, I don't want to get off the topic. This is a, this is another good one. Let's push it through.
Yes, and I think you should stay on the topic. Thank you very much. All right, Mr. Michael Hunt.
And thank you, Ms. Grul. I think you best said it yet. And I, too, have a daughter. Today's her birthday. I would like to wish Nioka Shanaya Hunt happy birthday today. My heart goes out to anybody that has a heart for kids and things like that. My understanding is I could never leave my kid in the back of the car because she's too precious. And wherever she goes, her daddy goes, and wherever daddy goes, my daughter goes. But I'm wondering, you know, is there any more that we can do to make this, make people more responsible? Maybe if a person's in the car, a bell would ring, and, you know, and do something really constructive to where if a car, a kid is left in the car, that a bell or something would go off in the car saying, please take the kid out the car, such as you see on alarms. Now, I think that would work a lot better. And it's really, really important that, that we look both ways in back of our SUVs and back of our mobile homes or motor homes or whatever, to make sure that there's no kids behind here. When you have a kid, you really understand the responsibility and really take heed of what Ms. Grul just said. So I'm going to commence you on that note, Ms. Grul, and keep up the good work. I want a yes vote on this one all the way across. Thank you. And Mr. Smith, thank you for listening to me this time. I too like to be heard.
There are no further speakers, no speakers in the queue. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next item.
Item number 40, called special by Councilmember Weisar.
May I, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much, colleagues. As you know, this item comes to us from Intergovernmental Relations Committee with a unanimously approved, a request to encourage the President of the United States, the US Congress, and the US Marine Corps to recognize Guy Gabbolden's accomplishments during World War II and honor him with a Congressional Medal of Honor. As many of you know, we had the honor and privilege of meeting Mr. Gabbolden when he went to Irvine's council meeting where we recognized him. And he was not only there in, in getting that recognition, but as many of you recall, he's just has, he's a beautiful human being, funny man, and someone who you know is, is very, very special. But as you know, council members, although he had the ability to capture over 1,000 prisoners of war during World War II, and although he was recommended and nominated for the Medal of Honor by his commanding officer, he was never awarded it. He went on to receive and be cast, well, his, his character was cast in a movie that showed his tremendous courage and ability to communicate with the Japanese due to his growing up with them here in Boa Heights. So with this resolution, we're asking the President of the United States and others to recognize Guy Gabbolden's accomplishments and to honor him for a recognition he well deserves. And as many of you know as well, just a few weeks ago, we read and we honored Mr. Gabbolden as well through a, in a- as well through a adjourning motion in his memory for his untimely death just about a month ago. Thank you, colleagues, for your support on this, and hopefully we could be back here one day talking about how he received the Medal of Honor positively. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There are two cards on this item. The first speaker is Mr. Matthew Dowd.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I love this one. Two of the good guys, too, Weezer and Reyes. I really appreciate what you put in yesterday down at Century Boulevard because I am an immigrant and I really feel for what those people go through. And, you know, I'm not on any public welfare or anything, but I was resourceful enough to make my own income and support myself at Venice Beach.
Excuse me, Madam President. He appears to be off topic. You could declare that he's out of order or ask him to speak on topic.
You'll have to stay on the topic, Mr. Dowd.
Okay. Well, this is the Pied Piper of Saipan. Correct me if I'm wrong. This is a World War II hero. I mentioned him on Wednesday in my public comment. You know, may God rest his soul because he, you know, he saved a lot of people from dying because he managed to convince them that there was a better way. And all they had to do was listen. So, yeah, Guy Gabbolden, great guy. I wouldn't say captured. He conned 1,500 Japanese into giving themselves up. But hey, great work, whatever it takes in that kind of situation. If you don't have to kill 1,200 people and you can capture them, then that's great. But yeah, I think he should get this Congressional Medal of Honor. And I'm in favor of encouraging the President to move forward with this. And Weezer, Reyes put together this motion, and I see the city council like the solar system, a bunch of planets, and once you find your way to the outside of that planet line, we all know what happened to Pluto.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dowd.
So make sure you stay close to the sun.
Thank you very much. We have to give the remaining speakers one minute each because we're at risk of losing a quorum. Our next speaker for one minute will be Mr. Michael Hunt.
I do appreciate that, too, Mr. Weezer. I think that's a great job that you and Reyes have put together. Also, I know Bill Rosenthal would understand because he's a veteran, too, if I'm not -- so I think this is a good one. Vote yes on it, and let's get on with the agenda for today.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hunt. Our next speaker for one minute will be Candido Maraz.
Thank you, Madam President. I was in Van Nuys when Mr. Guy Gabbolden was presented. He was an absolutely wonderful human being. He was the Latino Audrey Murphy. He was just incredible. He had this personality and the spirit that will go on forever, and I thank you for fighting for his medal. He deserves it. He's a hero to all of us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There are no speakers in the queue, no further speakers. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Next item, Madam President. I understand that council wishes to take a special meeting, item number two now. The amending motion has been distributed to the council members.
All right. Thank you very much. Are there any -- there are no speakers in the queue on this, no speaker cards. So we can open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
All right. I believe this item needs to go forth with.
And that is the only item that was left from the special meeting that would take council back to item number 41 from the regular meeting, and that was called special for cards from the public.
All right. And again, in the interest of voting while we still have a quorum, I will limit the time to comment to one minute each. Our first speaker will be Mr. Matthew Dowd.
Yeah, I've seen a million trees on Venice Beach and Los Angeles and in the county in the United States of America and all around the world and all that. We need another million trees because the police, they can put microphones and cameras in all the trees and big brothers looking at you and whatnot. And I don't think it should be a special event because all the city departments are putting all their resources for this, and we've already got a million trees all over the world and everywhere, and San Diego and L.A. and everywhere. But I don't know if I want to go to this event tomorrow because I'm worried the mayor will be there, and I don't think the mayor likes me because whatnot and all of that. It's been a great day, hasn't it? Hey, we should all go and have a beer sometime. You know, I'm not a bad guy, even though I'm -- you know what it is? I'm going not as far as I'd like to go, but as far as I'm legally.
Able to go, yes. Thank you. Mr. Zuma Dog.
Man, oh, it started on 59 seconds. It didn't even start on one minute. It's bad enough you cut it down a minute. This is for the Million Trees of L.A. It's going to be tomorrow. Jose Weezer's district, Hazard Park, USC is going to take it over, so get there while you can. The mayor's going to be there. Zuma Dog's going to be there. Here's what the Million Trees is all about. It's not like the city's planting a million trees. They're going to be handing them out one at a time. So tomorrow, they're handing out the first 200 trees. So you can come by, pick up a five-gallon tree, then it's up to you to plant it and water it and nurture it. So can you imagine in a city of 4 million people, you've got to have a million of them, 25 percent? Pick up a tree, plant it and nurture it? Aw, man, that is ridiculous. It's a waste of money. But I would like to say truly, this will be a fun event. If you have kids, come on by. Seriously, I'm not joking. It is a great community event. You can get people involved in the environment. Great family event. Meet Zuma Dog. Meet the mayor. Meet Jose Weezer. Tomorrow, Hazard Park. Zuma Dog for City Council.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, open the roll on this item. Close the roll. Tabulate the votes. Ten ayes. That item's been approved. Next item. Council has motions for posting and referral. Before you do that, we did have one person out in the valley. I don't know if they're still here. Their note came in late for a public comment. Is Susan Rocha still there? If you can check with the -- we'll see if she's still there. Give her another minute.
Yes, I'm still here.
Okay.
You can hear me.
I can hear you. Yes, there you go. Yes, Susan, please go ahead. We had public comment earlier, but I know you came in later. Please go ahead.
Thank you. I still want the noise law changed because right now churches are exempt from the noise law. This is what I have to hear all day, going on in my house all day, five times a day, sometimes five, 10 minutes at a time or whenever they feel like it. And also organ music and chimes. And I've asked Reyes to please change the noise law so there are some restrictions on nuisance churches. And he said no, he will not do anything. So my only appeal is to the rest of the council members to change the law. Right now, the L.A. City Municipal Code is Section 5, 115.02B, which exempts churches. So it gives them a free rein to be as loud as they want, whenever they want. They can ring it all night long if they feel like it. And I have a letter from the police commissioner telling me that. I don't know what else to do because Ed Reyes has already told me he's not going to do anything, and he's the only person that can help me unless the rest of the city council members will take a look at that law. And every office I call, usually they send me back to Ed Reyes's office.
Thank you very much for testifying today. Appreciate it. Madam Clerk? Council has motions for posting and referral. Those will be posted and referred. And that clears the desk, Madam President. Do we have any announcements today, colleagues? Announcements? Yes. Mr. Weezer followed by Mr. Labange and Mr. Parks.
Thank you very much, Madam President. As my colleagues know, there are over 700,000 people living in Los Angeles County who are eligible to become citizens just by filling out the appropriate paperwork. And we want to call on those folks to start the process of applying for citizenship tomorrow, Saturday, at the Convention Center from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. The National Association of Latino Electoral Officials is sponsoring a massive day of citizenship workshop with hundreds of trained volunteers and immigration attorneys on hand to help 2,000 legal permanent residents begin the N400 application. U.S. citizenship, as you know, offers a path to better life, to a better education, to more job opportunities, and to greater flexibility to travel and visit family and friends abroad. This event, although the application usually costs about $400 plus, will be either free or only $30 to all people who show up tomorrow at 8:00 a.m. and want to become a U.S. citizen if they're a permanent resident. It's also been announced today throughout this council meeting about the Million Trees L.A. campaign. It will be launched tomorrow at Hazard Park in Council District 14, this Saturday at 12:00 noon. The Million Trees L.A. initiative is intended to create an extraordinary environmental legacy in Los Angeles by planting 1 million new trees throughout the city. So far, 34,997 trees have been planted. Saturday will mark the beginning of a cleaner and greener future in the lives of the children and families, not only Boyle Heights, but the city of Los Angeles. I am pleased that the kickoff is taking place in my district. I will be joining the mayor, Council President Eric Garcetti, Zuma Dog to launch this initiative. For those who would like to join us at Hazard Park, the address is 2230 Norfolk Street, Los Angeles, 2230 Norfolk, N-O-R-F-O-L-K. And thank you so much for your support of this event.
Yes, Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Madam President. I think on behalf of the seat attorney, I'll take the liberty of inviting everybody out to the seat attorney's bike ride. On behalf of Rocky Delgado, everybody's invited to Warner Center tomorrow morning. Registration starts at 6:30, and I believe it's a 20-mile bike ride in the San Fernando Valley that starts at 8:00 o'clock. It's healthy, it's fun, it's social, and promises to be a beautiful day tomorrow weather-wise. Also want to acknowledge my colleague, Ed Reyes, representative of Dodger Stadium. The Dodgers aren't playing at home this weekend, but it's the last three games of the season. They're down in the division by one game, but they're up in the wild card by a game. And with three games left in the season, we're hoping to see some playoff action starting next week. So our thoughts go out to the boys in blue.
Thank you. Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Several announcements, 8th District. The NAACP Youth Council will be meeting this week at the Crenshaw United Methodist Church at 3740 Don Felipe from on Saturday, September 30th, 9 to 1. Also, for those, we've announced earlier, the Silver Dollar Classic is in the city this weekend. The Battle of the Bands will be at the Sports Arena this evening. And on Saturday at 10:30, the doors will open for the classic between Alcorn and -- let's see, who is it? I'll pick that up later. The 8th District also will have its kickoff on the Million Dollar Tree, September 30th, 10:00 a.m. at Mount Carmel Rec Center, 830 70th Street. And also, the HIV/AIDS Conference by the Minority AIDS Project will have a three-day HIV conference at the Radisson Hotel, 6225 Century Boulevard. It goes from October 4th to October 6th.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Announcements? Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much. On Tuesday, my office, Time Warner Cable and CNN, will be hosting a voter awareness exposition here at City Hall from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. I wanted to invite all of you here in the city council, the public and members of the city family, to stop by the south lawn of City Hall to visit the exhibits, activities, including online polling, voter registration and education, and a chance to express your views to a nationwide audience in CNN's mobile television studio.
Mr. Reyes.
We want to make sure that what you see along the river is what you want to see. We've had nine committee meetings, have nine more to go. There's one tomorrow, Saturday, September 30th, 10:00 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. Chevy Chase Rec Center, 4165 Chevy Chase Drive at Atwater Village. This is an opportunity to look at the five locations that have surfaced as priority node for development. So let us know what you want to see. Let's define your community the way you'd like to have it evolve, using the river as the major magnet for change and relief for our city. So please come on down. Refresh will be provided. You'll have planners, architects, you'll have environmentalists, you'll have social activists, you'll have investors. They'll all be joining you at the table, shoulder to shoulder, looking at maps and trying to define how we want to see the future of our city through the river. One last announcement. The River Center, 570 West Avenue 26, the former's lorry site, where used to have those great restaurants and beverages, will be giving out trees, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And it's sponsored by, I want to thank, Tijuana Water and Power, the Alley Conservation Corps, the Tree People, Korea Town Youth and Community Center, North East Trees, and the Hollywood Alley Beautification Team, as well as our mayor for allowing this opportunity to occur. Come on down for your trees.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much. It's such a great city that we live in. There's so much going on. And tomorrow, the Brazilian Days will be at the Page Museum, right out on Wilshire Boulevard there in the beautiful Miracle Mile, right adjacent to the great 10th District. We have this wonderful Brazilian Days sponsored by the Concert of Brazil, and it's from 12 to 6:00. All are welcome to come. It's free. And also, if you're interested in going to Los Angeles Zoo, it's a very special day at the zoo. Dr. Jane Goodall is visiting the zoo with programs all afternoon from 12:00 to 5:00. And I have just a signal from the side. If you want to come and correct, because I've had the bad information, it's a great day to be at the zoo. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I'd like to -- we have our own Million Trees kickoff in my district at 10:30 tomorrow. I guess it starts at 10:00. There'll be a program at 10:30 at Shadow Hills Presbyterian Church, 10158 Joanna Avenue in Sunland. Yes, Mr. Rosenthal.
Yes, I have the Million Tree thing tomorrow as well in Mar Vista, at the Mar Vista Park at 10:00 o'clock in the morning. I'm going to actually be planting five trees, but I'm also going to take a couple home because the seedlings you can take home. And the Mar Vista community is coming out in droves. Everybody's all excited. It's great. Tomorrow, 10:00 in Mar Vista, folks, those who live in that part of the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Do we have adjourning motions today? Adjourning motions? Yes. If I could ask everyone to please stand. Thank you. Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Madam President. On behalf of Councilwoman Janice Hahn, she wanted us to adjourn today for Vera Pacheco, a lifelong Wilmington resident who died on September 25th at the age of 65. She has survived by her husband of 46 years, Jose, daughters Diana, Mary, Sylvia, Monica, sons Joseph and Richard, 14 grandchildren and one great-grandchild. Visitation will be today at 1:00 p.m. with a vigil service at 7:00 p.m. at the Green Hills Chapel. Services will be held at St. Peter and Paul Church in Wilmington on Saturday at 10:00 a.m.
Thank you, Mr. Labange.
Yes, members, Peter Klintos, a great Greek, who was a USC pole vaulter and who competed in the 1932 Games for Greece here in Los Angeles, passed. He was, for many years, a high school teacher at Barstow High, coached a variety of athletic teams, including football and track. When World War I broke out, he joined the Army and taught physical education for the San Ana Unit of the United States Army Air Corps. He also taught in Los Angeles at Roosevelt High School, and then he was an administrator at Narbonne and Franklin High School until his retirement in 1974. I had an opportunity to meet him. He was a very dynamic man who was part of the Los Angeles Olympic Games of '32. Great history. I ask for adjourned in memory of Mr. Peter Klintos.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is behalf of Councilwoman Janice Hahn. She asks that we adjourn in memory of Aunt Minnie Porter, who lived in the 15th District for 52 years, died September 20th at the age of 84. She was married to Merle Porter, a member of the Kansas City Monarch Baseball Team. When they moved to L.A., Merle became the West Coast representative for the Black Living Legends of Negro Baseball. Minnie worked for USC for 45 years as an assistant director to the custodial services. She was a member of Grant AME Church for 56 years, where she worked closely with youth and women in the congregation. She survived by her niece and nephew's, two stepsons, and a host of other family members.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Any other adjourning motions? If not, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. The meeting is adjourned. Have a nice weekend.